Lauren, thank you for talking with me. It takes a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of people meeting and greeting to run for city council. What motivated you to do that?
Well, there were a lot of different things. I have lived in Chico my whole life and recently was getting involved in local politics, you know, from a community member perspective and really seeing a lot, particularly around, you know, housing is one of the things that I'm super passionate about. And I was seeing a lot of things that were really frustrating around renters in our community. Because our community is 60% renters and just seeing that whole community not really seen as stakeholders was unfortunate and really made me realize that we need some more diverse opinions on the council and we need some folks who are really interested in representing all of Chico.
How do you distinguish yourself between the people that are running for the same seat? Randall Stone and Andrew Coolidge? How are your platforms different?
Yeah, so one of the things that distinguishes me from both of them is that I don't want to continue to try to use the same solutions that we've been using. As far as, you know, there are differences between both of their platforms, obviously, and the biggest thing that sets me apart, I feel, is that I have solutions that focus on the core of the issue while working to solve the immediate crisis. So in terms of things like our homelessness crisis and our housing crisis and public safety, I'm looking at, yes, right now, today, tomorrow, we need to do something because this is an emergency. But we also need to have a long-term view of how we're going to fix these problems. You know, business as usual is not going to create the change that Chico urgently needs. So we need to get creative and try some new things.
As a hiker, I'm really stounded by going in Lower Bidwell Park or recently on Comanche Creek. Wherever you go, there's tents with no sanitation, no heating or cooling. It's not a humane way for human beings to live in. It's not good for the environment to have no porta-potties or whatever. So if you get elected, how would you tackle that crisis in terms of people who are not home, don't have homes?
Yeah, so one of the things that actually city council is currently discussing is a safe parking lot and possibly some sanctioned campgrounds. So if those get pushed through, then I will absolutely work to support them and expand them because, you know, no matter what we do right now, we probably won't be able to meet the need that we have. So I will, you know, we need immediately a safe parking lot for folks who might be living in their cars and for our neighbors in Paradise who were burned out of the fire, who are often living in RVs still with no place to park and creating and supporting the creation of a low barrier shelter so that folks do have a place to go, you know, they can go shower and with all of those services, we need to have access at the very, very least to, you know, restrooms and running water and sanitation. And then in the long term, because like I said, I like to look at all of the issues as, okay, what do we need to do right now? And what do we need to do to, you know, remove this as an issue? We desperately need more affordable housing. Affordable housing is one of the biggest reasons, or lack of affordable housing is one of the biggest reasons that folks are on the streets right now.
I know that Chat has, I don't know, housed 70 people with a lot of effort and fundraising and work from really dedicated volunteers and they had a place near Payless Lumber south of town, but people raised and they got approval from everyone, all the businesses around it. There are no homes around it. It wasn't a NIMBY issue, but concerted effort was made and that was you know, thrown into the woods. So how does one deal with that kind of opposition to finding homes for people who don't have them?
That is definitely a difficult one. One of the things that I do say is that we, again, we can't do the same things that we've always done and expect different results. We can't criminalize people out of existence if we're, you know, constantly criminalizing and, you know, we have a cycle of move along, move along without providing a place to go. Even if it's just temporary, we're not getting anywhere near to solving the root of the problem. So on that level, you know, it's like just logistically, we have to look at solving this problem. I also look at it, you know, from a compassion perspective because these are people who deserve our support and our compassion and, you know, these are our community members. So many folks who are currently unhoused lived in Butte County when they became unhoused. And then, you know, thirdly, it's actually cheaper for the community in the long run. It's more affordable to house people than it is to constantly have to work to have them move along or provide services to folks living on the street. So it's, you know, kind of a three-pronged argument. You know, not only is what we're doing right now kind of, you know, it's immoral, but it's also inefficient and ineffective.
I interviewed a police officer and he said most of his work is dealing with problems from homelessness. People say, oh, this person's camped on my lawn or gone to the bathroom on my lawn or whatever. So it's not a good use of our city resources to always be reacting rather than doing something proactive, it seems to me.
Absolutely. And, you know, we can't expect our police officers to be social services providers. That's not what they're trained for, nor is it what they're funded for, and that takes them away from being able to perform their other vital duties. So we have to look into creating systems to respond without, you know, constantly tasking the police department with things that are outside their purview.
I know another issue that you mentioned on your website is that climate change obviously underlies everything. If we have these fires and increasing heat and temperature, then it kind of makes every other issue pale in comparison. So what can a city do for dealing with climate change?
Yeah, one of the things that I like to say again is that none of our decisions are made in a vacuum. So every, every decision that we make has to take into account, particularly in this instance, climate change. So yes, we absolutely need more housing, but we have to be smart about the way that we develop it. So particularly for, you know, in terms of fire safety and conserving our public safety officers' time and energy and funding and, you know, lowering our carbon footprint, we have to make sure that the development that we do create is dense infill development. And by building up and not out, we are able to, you know, reduce the need to drive everywhere because if you're out on the edge of town, you can't necessarily just walk somewhere if you need a few eggs from the grocery store or, you know, to go pick up dinner or something. So by focusing on that dense infill development, we're making sure that we're, you know, tackling climate change from a variety of issues. We also need to, again, protect that defensible space because one of the reasons that Chico's been safer from fires is because we don't have houses going out and out and out. You can kind of tell when you leave Chico and that's something that really protects us. And we don't necessarily have the resources to expand our public safety services further and further out. So we need to, you know, take them into account if we're leaving the fire department at the current staffing levels, but vastly expanding their area that they need to cover, that's just not, that's not a great choice. So that's kind of what I mean by saying like taking climate change into account with every decision that we make because it does affect every decision or every decision does affect it. And we do have luckily a Climate Action Commission on the city level to make those recommendations. So we need to make sure that every decision that we make that affects our climate is going through them because they're the experts and they're there for a reason.
When Trump pulled out of the Paris Accord of 2015, mayors all around the US and governors formed groups to work together on climate to say, we acknowledge this is a problem, we're working together. And also there's a municipalist movement around the world headquartered, I would say, in Barcelona as in the forefront that where cities commit to progressive actions, not just providing police and fire and filling the potholes. And I wonder what your thoughts are about those coalitions of cities and commitments to municipalism as a, as a way of governing?
I love the idea of municipalism because we, you know, California is a really large state with a really vast diverse population and it also has a lot of different climates and geographies. So, or geographical differences. So we're not a one-size-fits-all state. So I think that we as cities need to change the way that we're governing from city to city. So what works in LA isn't going to be the same for us in Chico or, you know, up further north. So having the option to make more decisions on the municipal level for the benefit of our communities is going to be a really great way to ensure that we're taking care of current and future generations. And on that note, like, like I said, there's so many different populations in California, so with vastly different needs. So if we're waiting constantly for the state or the federal government to make decisions to kind of save us, we're going to definitely suffer some of the effects of that because it's just too much area to cover. So we need to start making some decisions here at the city level to work to take care of our communities.
Are you involved with the Sunrise Movement at all? Their focus is on a Green New Deal that could be implemented on various levels of government. What's your thoughts about them and the Green New Deal?
I like the idea of a Green New Deal because, you know, while it's not necessarily they, there's, you know, different levels of implementation for different Green New Deals. So I think we absolutely need to have a call for policies that work to mitigate climate change and create a plan to treat the climate crisis as what it is, which is a crisis. So I haven't been super involved with the Sunrise chapter, but I've, you know, done different events with them and I've gone and seen them speak and it's a really great movement and I think that we need to work harder to get young people involved. And I say that as one of the young people. And I don't always see a lot of kind of intergenerational activism and involvement. So I think that that's something that is good and I think that Sunrise is, you know, a huge part of that in getting young people involved and then bridging different gaps with different organizations as well.
Let's say a little bit about your background. Where and when were you born? Tell us a little bit about your educational background, your career choices.
Yeah, I was born at Enlow in December of 1996. So I've lived in Chico my entire life. It's one of my favorite places that I've ever been. I went to Butte College and then Chico State to get my bachelor's degree in psychology, working at some different local businesses along the way, as well as as a behavioral health education specialist associate for Butte County Behavioral Health. I've worked as the business manager for Chico Chi, which is another one of our beloved local businesses, doing financial and employee management. And then I am currently working as a case manager, working to help people transition out of homelessness. I started doing research on homelessness and housing when I was in college and continued to do that after graduation and got more and more involved in community organizing and advocacy. So working on education and getting folks involved in the decisions that affect them. Because that's something that we tend to be pretty, feel pretty separate from. So I have kind of a variety of experiences in social services, business management and community organizing, which really have developed my ability to bring thoughtful leadership to different roles that I take on, including as a city council member. And I think that we need that variety of approaches to run a city well because we're not just a public safety mechanism, we're not just a financial organization. So it takes a lot of different experiences.
So that means you're, you're 23?
Yes.
That's fabulous. Do you know how old Alex, the vice mayor, was when she was first elected? Because she's probably the other youngest person on the city council.
Yeah, I think she was around, she was in her twenties, I know for sure.
Right. That would be great to have two young points of view on the city council. As kind of an end note, what I'm seeing around the world, I'm working on a book about girls who are climate activists, is there's a problem with teen anxiety and depression, especially among girls. And I'm wondering if you see that, especially anxiety among adolescents, especially among girls, and if so, why? Why they increase?
You know, I think that we're facing kind of global crises on a scale that we haven't seen before. And we're also living in the age of information. So we're constantly inundated with that bad news and with the news of suffering and I think that there can sometimes be a little bit of hopelessness around that. So I've, you know, I've actually experienced some of that where I feel like the problems of the world are so big and there's nothing we can do about it. And particularly right now with the isolation of COVID-19 combined with, you know, the nationwide unrest are huge factors. So I think that it's multifaceted, but all of those things are contributing to that depression and anxiety. You know, from what I've read and from my own personal experience, that's what I would say.
You mentioned a global crisis. Do you mean the climate crisis and the pandemic or what crisis did you have in mind?
Those were the two that I was thinking of in particular.
Yeah. If a adolescent in Chico who doesn't have a lot of money is experiencing that anxiety, who can they turn to? Where can they get help?
So there's some, there are some warm lines which are peer group-led like talk lines, so you can, you know, talk to somebody. I believe it's the North Valley Talk Line, which has been super helpful for some folks that I know. You know, Butte County Behavioral Health is a great place to start seeking care and they might be able to point you to places where you can get care. Particularly for LGBTQ plus youth, Stonewall Alliance is an incredible resource. And for folks experiencing some violence at home, Catalyst is also a good resource for particularly women. So those are some good places to start. And Chico Free Counseling also is another good one that takes Medicare. So there's a variety of options and places to start.
It seems like school counselors should be available, but mostly school counselors do testing and plan schedules and do paperwork. It doesn't seem like the school counselors who are in every high school and junior high are that available for students to say, I need to talk because I'm anxious. Is that accurate or not?
Yeah, in, that seems to be the case. And when I was working with young people and they would talk about their experiences at school, it definitely doesn't seem like we have the infrastructure in our public education system to address mental health. So I would definitely agree with that, you know, school counselors are, you know, they're great and they do, you know, they can advocate for kids to get the help that they need on, like you said, like testing and planning. But I think that there needs to be more of a focus on the mental health of the young people that we have in our community and, well, I mean, communities all over, but I definitely see that need here.
Academics tend to point to social media as the cause of the increase in youth anxiety, especially girls, that we compare ourselves to the photoshopped images on Instagram or we see that we weren't invited to this party with our peers. How much blame do you attribute to social media in terms of these mental health problems for youth?
I think that it definitely has an effect. And again, it's, in the grand scheme of things, it's brand new. So it's hard to know the exact effect that it's having on our mental health, but, you know, there are studies that show that social media is addictive and it has that, that effect where, you know, even if it makes you unhappy, you're like, wait, I still need a little more. Then you go and it makes you more unhappy. So it's kind of a cycle of, of that and for me, it can be a little bit of both. Right now, social media has been one of the ways that I'm staying connected to my best friends because I can't just go over there and I like to say, I wish I could come over and lay on your floor. So I have to do that over social media because we're staying safe. And so I think that right now in particular, it's probably doing a bit of both where, you know, it can be a really great way to stay connected, but it can also be a struggle.
Right. What was the impetus or the catalyst to say, I'm going to run for city council? What gave you the bee in your bonnet?
There were a couple of different things. Advocating for, you know, better protections for renters and feeling that kind of frustration where I didn't necessarily feel like I was being, like we were being listened to was a huge part. And then one of the biggest things was seeing the massive protests earlier this year at city council made me realize that we need more folks to get involved and that we need people who care about our community and who have new ideas and new solutions to the problems that we're facing. And so that was where I decided, that was where I was like, okay, yeah, that's me. And I can do that.
What was the, what were those protests about in front of the city council?
The protests in particular, there were a couple of kind of compounding issues. We had, over the course of about three months, created, the city created districts for city council and there was a lot of kind of unrest about some of the decisions made there. And then the CIT-LI ordinance was also up for being discussed to get taken away. And then the syringe exchange program was something that people were protesting as well. So it was kind of three big things that happened all at once that really led to a very big, big show.
Got it. And the CIT-LI says that homeless people can't loiter. Is that what that refers to?
Yeah, and it's particularly around businesses and, you know, it's, you know, technically applies to all people. But overwhelmingly homeless folks are the ones who see the ill effects from it.
In terms of your thinking about what city government can do, are there other cities that have inspired you, like Vancouver, BC is a really green city or Davis, our neighbor to the south has lots of social supports? Are there books that have inspired you? What kind of shapes your thinking about what city government can do?
There have been a lot of different things and there's definitely, I don't see like one city that's, you know, just doing it right all together because that's really hard to do. Not that I necessarily know exactly how to do it, but, you know, one of the cities that I take a lot of inspiration from is Eugene, Oregon. They have so many ways to get involved in the community. I was like going through some of the ways that you can get involved. And that was just really cool because I want to encourage folks to get involved in their communities. Lane County, which houses Oregon, also has the White Bird Clinic, which is the primary 24/7 crisis intervention service. And for over 50 years, they've been offering immediate short-term support to people in crisis. And they have trained counselors with a deep ability to empathize with people and extensive knowledge of local resources that they can point people to. I would love to use that model here in Chico because it's a real crisis response team that can meet people where they're at. And it takes that, again, it removes that role from the police department, which they're not trained or funded to do. And as well, it would, you know, support the Butte County Behavioral Health for, with, with crisis response.
What are some of the ways that Eugene offers to get involved that we don't have in Chico?
Some of the things were just, one of the things that I really loved was just, there was a, they have a website that has all of the different options. So and with each way to get involved, so it's like if you want to do animal advocacy or if you want to work to, you know, work with people and housing, you can get, you can just click a link and it'll take you there. So it's not necessarily just, they don't have, you know, a bunch of different categories that we don't have. There are just more options within them is what I've seen. And for some things, I feel that it is, it can be hard to get plugged in in a community. So having ways that are just super easy to plug in and get involved and meet people would be really great. So just different, you know, almost like a database of community involvement would be really great.
And we don't have that in Chico? The Chamber of Commerce doesn't offer anything like that?
They definitely have some, they have some of that. You can go to their website. You can go to their website and see different, you know, different events that you can get involved in and go to. I would just love to see it as, you know, uh oh, I'm interested in the arts or oh, I'm interested in ad- animal advocacy or all of these different things. You know, we we all have different interests and a different role to play in our community. But I'd like to have it be easier for folks to get involved. Um another thing that I I saw in or have seen in different cities, particularly um Chicago and New York, which, you know, can be super crowded and most people don't have yards or lawns as community gardens. We have a couple of them in Chico. There's actually one in my district. It Butte Environmental Council has a community garden. Um and I just absolutely love that idea because we, it it just fosters a sense of relationship with your neighbors and your community. And it also helps with access to fresh local food, which not everyone has.
Is that the one that buy Emma Wilson School?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I that's my neighborhood too. Um is is there anything else that you'd like people to know about you, your campaign? Why you should be elected that we haven't touched on?
I think that you know, my my priorities are real housing and homelessness solutions, real public safety and climate resilience and disaster preparedness. I want people to vote as if their future depends on it because it does. And I'm looking towards creating a safe and livable, sustainable community for current and future generations. We need to start having a ten, twenty, fifty year view of the world and I'm looking towards the future. So we have to realize that business as usual is not going to get us the change that we urgently need. And we have to get creative. And I think that with thoughtful leadership and creative solutions, that we're going to be able to face the challenges ahead with grace and community.
Would it, it wasn't Einstein who said something about stupidity is trying to solve problems with the same solutions that don't work? Uh he said it much more elegantly, but something like that.
Yeah, I think there's a a quote that says insanity is y- you know, doing the same action and expecting a different result.
Yeah.
Or something like
We've got it.
Yeah, we have to, we have to start doing something different.
Um and in ter- one more question, in terms of um safety and resilience, um President Trump's solution is we need to sweep our forests and and do better uh forest management. Whereas wh- what, at least forty percent of the forests in California are federally operated. I don't know, what what's your take on uh how to prevent these terrible fires that have harmed our communities?
Yeah, I do think that I I don't recommend sweeping the forests. Um I'm not an expert, but I don't think that's gonna be the way to go. Um but you know, looking to the folks who have lived in and around Chico for thousands of years and tended this land for so long, the Machu Picchu people, they have traditional ecological knowledge about how to take care of our land in a sustainable way. So looking to them for fuel log management practices and truly sustainable land management is definitely going to have a huge effect. And um we did actually, the city created a um I say we, I wasn't involved in it at all, but the city created a vegetation management plan that does actually point to the Machu Picchu tribe as um a source and I was really happy about that because, you know, they know what's up with this land. And we need to look to them to ensure that we're managing it and tending it, tending to it in a sustainable way.
I interviewed uh an indigenous geography professor who who talks about, yeah, they knew how to do controlled burning at the right season to keep the undergrowth down and that kind of thing. So that makes that makes perfect sense. Okay, really last question. Um do you find that as a young woman that sometimes people don't treat you as seriously as you your older male competitors? How do how does it function being a young woman in this campaign?
I definitely have experienced um some of that in my initial interview that I did with the ER. Most of the comments underneath were about how I looked like I was twelve. Um I get a lot of comments about being too idealistic. Um and a lot of just, you know, oh, you don't have the experience, so you you can never know how to do any of this. Um so that that has been a huge part of it. But then also there has been a lot of encouragement of people being excited that a young woman is excited to run for city council. So I've gotten a lot of encouragement of folks who have been saying for years, we need to get more young people involved, we need to get more young people involved. And then I came along and they were like, yes, this is what we meant. So um you know, I think that some people aren't are not gonna be happy with what I say no matter what. But I really want to try to bridge those gaps and have real conversations with people and make sure that I'm listening to people's concerns. I can't make myself any older, so that's the only thing that I I can't do. But I definitely wanna listen to concerns and you know, look to experts to make this um to give advice and input on decisions that we make as a city.
Um it it seems unfortunate that fundraising becomes such a huge task for people running for office and it kind of consumes them and colors their judgment and that kind of thing. So I wonder how you deal with that fundraising challenge? Cause you gotta have the signs up and the mailers and the postcards, which which all takes money.
Yeah, it does. And that was something that I thought about a lot. I didn't want this to be a campaign that was you know, spending money just because we could. Um so we've been really thoughtful about the things that we do spend money on. Like obviously we get the flyers and the yard signs and the website. Um but we're being really thoughtful and making sure that we're spending money on things that actually increase voter contact. So things like text and phone banking and um just whatever we can do to have kind of direct uh quote unquote face to face contact in the age of COVID. Um and yeah, just getting a lot of small donations from a lot of supporters. And that's been something that's been really cool to see. I think we have um around around a hundred separate donors. I could be um I know we've gotten like a hundred separate donations, so that's really cool to see. It's not like a couple massive donors are funding my campaign. It's um, you know, folks who wanna see change in in our community.
You, when you talk to people at the farmer's market every Saturday, what kind of uh concerns do they have? What do they say? I really want you to think about what?
Yeah, I've actually only been able to go out once cause of air quality. But um I had some folks come in and talk about, you know, being upset um about feeling unsafe in the parks due to folks camping there. Um I've talked to a lot of people were uh excited about the idea of more infill development and, you know, living closer to work and looking at our, you know, really thoughtfully looking at our zoning policies to make sure that it fits the needs of our city. And and then some people were just really stoked um without specific concerns or or ideas. And some people were just, you know, kind of immediately not as stoked. Um but when I talk to people from, you know, different um different spaces, like I've tried to do some more direct District Five contact, um people are concerned about streetlights and sidewalks and roads. The roads in District Five are pretty bad and that is something that I wanna focus on because you can't really ride your bike or walk if you're feeling unsafe due to having to you know, walk in the street or ride your bike and then all of a sudden the road kind of just stops and you're like, oh. Well, not sure what to do. So, you know, a variety of different issues. I I think that homelessness is really a really hot topic. So a lot of folks have questions and concerns about that. Um but otherwise, you know, people wanna talk about development and streetlights and roads and sidewalks.
Traditional city topics. Thank you.